Okay, we're on record. We're on record. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Board Adjustment. It is Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, and it is 7:33 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 Act 7 of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act.
Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Berkowitz.
Finally here.
Mr. Crowe.
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn. Not here.
Not here yet.
Mr. Ready.
How's that?
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairwoman Grignani.
Present.
And also our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontellet.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please join us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Nora, the resolutions, please.
Okay, we're going to do the resolutions in three groups. Uh, application 2468, uh, 9 Mini Haha. We're reapproving this resolution with a condition that should have been added. Uh, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCrose.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Our next group will be application 252112 Rinald, 25137 Brentwood, application 251410 Normandy, application 25178.5 Roosevelt, and application 28, I'm sorry, 2508250 Allentown. And those who can vote are Berkowitz, Mazzarella, Petty, Ready, Willins, and Grignani. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Apologies. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
And our last resolution, application 2501, uh, Family Adventures Persipony, uh, we have Berkowitz, DeCrose, Petty, Ready, and Grignani. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCrose.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job.
Application 2416 Mohammed Zair, 24 Seminole Avenue, Block 539, Lot 9, Zone R4, C-Application, C-Variance, to construct a front covered porch, left side additions, right side addition, rear covered porch, left side covered landing and stairs, relocate detached garage, driveway, front walk, rear balcony, and two AC units contrary to Section 430-35, Column 10.
Just before we get to your application.
Please sit down. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to bring before us that is not on the agenda this evening? I see none. Please sit down, Mr. Zair. Thank you.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name and spell your last name.
Mohammed Zair.
And you're the applicant. You're the owner of the property.
Yes.
You have witnesses. Do you want to testify? Tell us what's going on? Or you want to just go with your witnesses? Okay. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Todd Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G, I'm the architect for the project.
And you were qualified at the last hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you've been qualified on other occasions, correct?
Yes.
You can proceed.
Proceed, please.
Well, I believe that the first hearing, we pretty much went over everything. The only open items that I recall.
Could you please, sir, could you please bring the microphone closer to you? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The only open items that I recall, uh, were the error on the plan that showed an additional kitchen upstairs, which has since been removed. It was just a designation of a kitchen, not an actual kitchen, and the site issues. So unless the board has other questions for me, I'd like to pass it right along to our site engineer who's here tonight.
So the only change in the architectural plans was the removal of the reference, the incorrect reference to a second story kitchen.
Yes.
Are there any questions from the board on the left? On the right?
No.
Do you want to say anything about this?
Do you have the engineer report? Are you in compliance with that?
Yes, the engineer is here tonight. He'll be next.
Could you comment on the reason that this building is so far out of the ground?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Could you comment on the reason why this building is so far out of the ground?
Yes, it's, uh, to keep it above the flood elevation of the town. So I believe the first floor is set two feet above.
I see, but I couldn't read it.
Any questions from the, in the audience of this witness and his testimony? I see none. Thank you.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Now, I don't recall you testifying the last time. So why don't you just go through your qualifications and your license?
Hey, Kevin Rowland, I'm the special engineer for the state of New Jersey. My license is current valid. Testified in front of numerous boards. I believe I've testified in plenty in Morris County and Montville.
Your license is in good standing?
My license isn't.
We had to cancel.
Thank you, your fault.
So, based on the last hearing, I did get a chance to, uh, watch the video, which is very helpful, uh, to get brought up to speed. We did prepare the plan, the current site plan, before you, um, demonstrating how, uh, how the site will work, um, and, uh, including stormwater management and, uh, um, compliance with DEP regulations for, uh, for flood hazard area, um, flood hazard area standards. Ultimately, um, the house has, as, uh, the board planner had mentioned, the houses had to be elevated based on the, uh, most current flood hazard area elevations, design flood elevations, um, which puts the, uh, puts the house approximately, uh, first floor about seven feet above, um, the surrounding grade approximately.
Not to interrupt, but just give me one second. Am I right? We wanted the engineer back mainly because of the water? We had questions about that and then the second kitchen.
You, you had a, you had a July 2nd, 2024 memo from your township engineer?
Yes.
That had a number of issues raised?
Yeah.
They didn't have that?
Gotcha.
At the hearing?
Okay.
So they requested additional time to review that letter?
Great.
And address the concerns that were raised in that letter.
Yeah, so wi- with that letter from the, uh, from the board enge- or the township engineer, uh, we had submitted these, uh, plans in front of you to, uh, his office in April. Um, something got lost in the shuffle and, uh, they were able to review that, um, this week and issue a letter today, uh, advising that all their comments from the, the prior memo, I believe it was, um, um, July of last year, uh, were addressed and that, uh, they don't have any real comments on the current application. I believe you have a copy of that letter.
Yeah, that's a letter today, June 11th, 2025, which is today's date, and I think the board has in their action.
And, and with, with that submission and with that, uh, um, review, we did provide, uh, we, we do have a slight increase in impervious coverage to deal with stormwater. Um, so we did provide a small infiltration system. It's actually, uh, rather small. Uh, the increase in impervious coverage is about 200 square feet. So the system that needed to be designed is, is relatively small, located in the front yard, and has an overflow discharge to an existing, uh, connection to municipal facilities in the street, stormwater facilities in the street.
But that didn't trigger the need for an additional variance for impervious coverage, correct?
No.
You still have just the one variance for building?
No, there is, there is an, uh, an impervious coverage variance.
I didn't see that on.
But it's, uh, but it's, the impervious coverage is 0.4% over, but the building coverage is a couple percent.
Yeah, and with, with that additional.
So more runs off the impervious coverage calculation.
Because the sheet just shows building. The sheet just shows building.
Yeah, that's what I would prefer.
Yes. Well, I've got one here that shows on the pla- on the plan.
Impervious is not on.
Calculations on the plan show.
This is the new one.
There's a zoning schedule. It shows lot coverage at 40% allowed, 46.4 proposed. Impervious lot coverage, which is the range of 40% allowed, 40.4.
Minimum.
So that, was that triggered by the revisions after the last hearing?
Um, we didn't revise, the plan that we had developed was, uh, prior to the March hearing.
Okay.
Um, so that was in response to not only, um, whatever comments that the applicant had received at the first board hearing, but also the comments that were received by the township engineer of July of last year.
Okay, so you need, the applicant needs two variances.
Yes, there's a variance for, uh, building coverage and a variance for impervious coverage. And then also there's variances for various setbacks as well.
You have stories.
You got three stories versus two in that.
Three stories as well, yes. And the, and the additional side yard setback variances.
I think that was discussed last.
I believe so, yes.
I'm confused. Because I don't, where are they on our sheet?
Do you have the plan?
The new, the new plan.
Okay. So it's there, it's not on the, okay.
I was asking the same question.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So I just wanted to mention for the record on, uh, as far as the impervious coverage variance, we are, uh, zero point, uh, we're 0.4% uh, over the maximum allowable, uh, for the zone. Um, a lot of that stems from the number of steps that we need to provide to get into the, into the house based on the elevation requirements for the DEP flood hazard area regulations. So typically, if you had a house that was not so much out of grade as required by the DEP, um, you would have less coverage and that coverage difference would be mitigated. It's really essentially due to, to, due to the, um, additional steps required.
Does that have anything to do with the height as well or no?
Uh, yes, that, that is precisely the reason why we also have a height variance, which we, we comply with the overall height measurement. Um, it's just the number of stories. The basement definition in the ordinance is, uh, uh, counts that lower level, um, it's defined as a basement in the ordinance, but not considered a basement in the flood hazard area regs. Um, but it's, uh, if half, half the clear space of that is exposed.
If it was built on non-flood area, it would be lower and therefore.
And it would conform.
It wouldn't, it would be conforming. Okay. Thank you.
So then you'd only be two stories instead of three stories?
That's correct.
So the third story is not technically a third story in terms of typical living space?
No, no, it's, it's, the, the DEP regulations will only require storage of materials in that space. There's no, uh, no habitable space that's permitted under those regulations.
And none, there's no habitable space in that third story come down from the plan?
No, no, that third story is essentially the crawl space underneath the first floor that had to be elevated due to the flood hazard area regs.
And if memory serves me correctly, uh, uh, when you were here before, we suggested that you carry this case because at that time there were some issues with the engineer's report on water runoff and everything else, right? That's all been resolved?
Yes.
And so we suggested that you make sure you would be able to afford whatever he wanted you to have done. So now he's agreed, your plan covers that, he's, no more issue on that, right? And that's the letter we have now saying. Just want to make sure I was clear. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience on the testimony given by this gentleman only? See none. Any questions on the left? Any questions on the right? Additional questions? No.
I, I have just one. It really is the architect. The brick facade that present itself to the street, which is the basement, basically. Have you given any thought to some other material other than brick? And the reason I ask, it just seems that this house would be imposing with that material.
I'm sorry, I missed one word there. The house would be what?
Imposing.
Imposing.
The solid material all the way up the front.
Um, I think that's a good point.
Isn't, aren't these walls supposed to be knockout walls?
No, there, there's a, there's a series of vents that allows the flow through of water.
They're not shown in the front, they're all on the side. Did you give it any thought when you were designing this?
I'm sorry, what?
As to possible having a different material for the, we'll call it the basement walls?
On the front of the house.
I mean, this type, this type of raised home is not really that characteristic of Persipony. You go down to the shore, you see them all over. Yeah. And they're generally done differently.
Sorry, sir, we continue.
I just might comment on, uh, what your comment was about the, uh, house not being characteristic. I think that this type of house in these floodplain areas are going to become more and more apparent as, uh.
So do I.
Properties get developed.
Yeah, so do I, but I think you need to get somehow or other an appearance from the street that it is not as imposing. Um, you've got almost 32 feet of brick all the way up the front.
Yeah.
And, and I just converse with my client and he would, he would consider, uh, continuing the ethus from the side around the front.
Well.
If that's.
Should I put a different, a different siding on the ca- on the gable? A different siding on the gable, like a scallop siding or match what's over the porch or?
We're trying to avoid a colonial or Victorian look.
Okay. Which, I'm just, I appreciate it though. Okay.
But I, I didn't hear you, sir. What did you say he agreed to?
Uh, that, on the, on the size of the building, at, at the basement level, there is, uh, ethus, stucco material.
Right.
And he would agree to carry that around through the front.
Oh, okay. In the front, then?
Yes.
So it would be.
Up to the first floor level.
Right, it would be a different floor.
Okay.
I know.
Any other comments? Would one of the board members like to frame a resolution, please?
Do we have any questions from the audience? I'm sorry.
Any additional comments from the audience, please? For or against this application? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Would one of our members like to?
Sure.
Frame a resolution, please?
I, I think you, you handled it well. You got in the experts we needed to hear. You're making the changes that we have requested. Uh, you agreed to all the engineers' requests and we were able to work this out in your, I believe in your benefits, so I'll be voting for it.
You're on a roll, go.
Okay. Application 24:16, Mohammed Zair, 24 Seminole Avenue, Block 539, Lot 9, Zone R4, recommend granting a C-Variance to construct a front covered porch, left side additions, right side addition, rear covered porch, left side covered landing and stairs, relocate detached garage, driveway, front walk, rear balcony, and two AC units contrary to Section 430-35, Column 10, and agreeing with all the engineers' requests and changing the front, uh, to stucco? To stucco. Is that, is that right, Mr. Johnson?
On that, on the first level.
On the first level.
Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
I just have a question. What are we going to, are we granting three variances?
You're granting three variances.
And it's subject to, uh.
Subject to those conditions. You're granting a impervious coverage, building coverage, um, three stories and a side yard setback.
Yes.
All right, and what about the DEP permits? Which is what we need permits on?
I don't remember their.
It did say that somewhere.
In the engineer's original letter, he mentioned.
Yes.
Did you apply to DEP yet?
There are, uh, two technical permits that are required from the DEP that application has not yet been submitted. One is a permanent rule, which is a formal application of the DEP for the detached garage. The second is a general permit, uh, by certification number six, which is an online submission, something that can be obtained within the DPA's, within the DEP. So that application still needs to be.
Well, if we approve this, you don't get this, you can't move forward anyway, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
So just a.
The three.
A resolution that, uh, subject to DEP approval.
Yep, I will add that to the list.
Thank you, I vote, I vote yes.
DeCrose?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Your application, your resolution will be approved, and at that time you will be receiving a letter from the township, and you can go forward to receiving your zoning permits.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
Good luck.
Application 25:05, San, Sanamon Zone, 18 Cherokee Avenue, Block 551, Lot 22, Zone R4, a C-Variance to park a commercial vehicle on existing driveway. A business is not being proposed at the residential property contrary to Section 430-25A and B. Mr. Mazzon?
Yes. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I don't.
What would you like the board to know?
I'm just trying to get permission to park my truck in my driveway. I had a truck in this driveway for 22 years. Also, someone comes, they don't live in this state, don't even have a house around there, complaining about my truck. Even though my neighbors all have trucks parked in their driveway, to go after one truck, I think it's very personal.
What kind of truck is it?
It's a, it's a service truck.
A what? What type of truck?
A service truck.
A service truck?
Yes, it has, you know, toolboxes on the side.
And does it have writing on it?
Yes. It's a commercial truck.
Is it associated with your business?
Yes.
What is your business?
I do repairs on construction equipment on site.
And do you run that business out of your house or at a different location?
Yeah, machines are too big to bring home.
So you don't run the business out of your house?
No.
You just park the truck?
Just park the truck there at night and overnight and, you know, normally by seven o'clock in the morning, it's out of there. By seven thirty, eight o'clock at night, it's back home.
What does your driveway look like?
It's, it's, uh, one quarter width, 60 feet long.
60 feet long?
Yeah, so I park, it's on the side of my house, like, don't stick out. Like, you have to be driving down a dead end street and look up my driveway to see the front of the truck. And usually there's always something parked in front of it because of security reasons.
And after 22 years, someone got pissed off and ran you?
Yeah, yeah, it's only if they live in town, which, I think if one of my neighbors had an issue, it'd be a different story, but when there's four of their houses there to have commercial vehicles parked in their driveways and go after me, I think it's kind of personal.
You have this vehicle that you get, get up in the morning, you get in the vehicle, you drive it to wherever you're going, and then you bring it home at night? So it's almost like your personal vehicle, your car?
Yeah, it's almost like my personal vehicle.
And it's parking on your personal property?
Yes.
But it is a commercial vehicle?
It's a commercial vehicle.
And we don't allow commercial vehicles parking on our lot, right?
No.
It must have to do sizes. Really big truck?
Yeah, it's decent size.
It exceeds three quarters of a ton?
Pretty much, the way the law is written, pretty much everything's over three quarters of a ton. I mean, every single minivan out there that's for schools, all these people are driving these little vans around the school systems that are over three quarters ton. But they're, they're allowed to park in their driveway, so why can't I?
But your vehicle is over three quarters of a ton.
Yes. Pretty much everything is in today's times. The law needs to be re-written. Your personal vehicle.
You're right, but right now, that's the law. So that's, we'll have to deal with.
Yes.
You made a point of somebody doesn't live there, is he competitive?
Yeah, I've reckoned out who complained about it. They don't even live in Port, they don't even live in the state.
Someone asked.
You asked.
I asked you how they are competitive.
I have no idea.
Okay. All right. Do you know what your truck is rated as?
What, you mean the weight?
In terms of weight? Yeah.
Weight, weight of the truck.
26,000 GBW.
So in terms of?
It's almost like a, any 550, if you have a Ford dually truck, same weight, um, any Dodge, dual wheels in the back, it pretty much falls in.
It's bigger than what's allowed now, but it's not that big.
Yes.
So it's enough? 250, 350?
Well, yeah, it's a, it's a Kenworth. So it's a T, T 270.
Do you have photographs or any dimensions of this truck? So you could show the board?
It's just, it's got a 14-foot body in the back.
Do you have any pictures of the truck?
No.
Because I, the plan you submitted has a, has a thing where it's labeled truck, but the size is three feet, roughly three feet by 15 feet, and I would think your truck's a little bigger than that.
The body's 15, so you put the cab on it, you're probably, I don't know, eight.
But it says, according to the drawing, it's only about three feet wide.
No, it's, it's, it's eight feet wide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if we had pictures or something.
Yeah, I don't know pictures, no.
But you typically park it on the side of the house, correct?
Yes, on the side of the house.
That's where the driveway is, right?
Yeah, the driveway runs along the side of the house. Like I said, it's 60 feet long, so there's, there's a Jeep parked in front of it, and sometimes something else is parked in front of that, too. Like, you don't see it, it's parked on the side of the house. And for over 22 years, I had a truck up that side parked in this house.
And your immediate neighbor on the left and to the right, the particular on the left, as close as that has no ownership, right?
No, actually, they can, well, they, all of them want to come here tonight and speak up for me, but I said, don't worry about it. All my neighbors want to be here. I could get a letter from every one of them if you want. Nobody in my block complains about that truck. Like I said, there's four other Porsche vehicles on that block, why do you have to just make? There's a landscaper, there's a plumber there, the plumber has two big trucks sitting in his driveway.
We don't know what you did wrong or right, but that's not what we're here to judge on either.
But I'm just saying, if it was a neighbor that complained, they would complain about everybody there.
Yeah, got it.
So if it had been somebody driving through the neighborhood that I took the work from them, I don't know.
I almost think this is a pre-existing condition, and I think it's a fairly moot point. You have the thing near the back of the property, you take it out of there every day, so I'm in favor of voting for the variance at this point.
Are there any questions from the audience on the testimony that this gentleman has given to us this evening? I see none.
The other question is that what about if we permit you for commercial vehicle parking and you, next time you buy a bigger than what you have now?
Somebody said.
I don't go any bigger, it's the biggest one. Usually, every ten years, I buy.
Just yesterday, no, just want to be on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Are there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against or for this application? I see none. Are there any additional questions from the board of this applicant?
Nope.
Did you get this out of the truck?
He said it's three quarters.
Dimensions?
Two seventy.
Do you have the model? The question is the model of the truck.
It's Kenworth T two seventy.
Kenworth T two seventy.
You have the registration?
Oh, yes.
Not on me, keep it in the truck.
What the registration says the truck is classified?
The truck says it's Kenworth T two seventy. It's twenty-six thousand GBW, it's under CDL. Like I said, it's really no different than anybody parking a van in their driveway, or it's just a different-looking style truck.
That'll be the limit, so if you buy a new one, you're going to stay with that size.
I will never go no better than that, no.
So you understand?
Trucks are getting.
Are there no additional questions from this board? Would one of our board members like to frame a resolution, please?
Application twenty-five colon zero five?
Excuse me? Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, but it's a service truck, and it has no box on the back like that, but yeah.
It's not like that?
No.
Do you have a question, Mr. Crowe?
I didn't, Santosh did.
Okay. Santosh?
No, I'm good.
No, he's satisfied.
Can I go?
Please.
Application twenty-five colon zero five, Sam Moss on eighteen Cherokee Avenue, block five fifty-one, lot twenty-two, zone R dash four, the issue a grant a C variance to park a commercial vehicle on existing driveway in contrary to section four thirty dash twenty-five A and B.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Dick Crowes?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand?
Yep.
Grignani?
Yes. Your resolution will be approved and mailed to you, and at that time, you may come and receive your zoning permits. Lots of love.
Thank you.
Application twenty-four colon forty-three, HK Truck Services Incorporated, ten thirty forty-six, Fanny Road, Intervale Road, block four-four-eight, lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, zone zero dash S, preliminary and final major site plan with C, D variance, major soil moving permit to construct a truck sales and service facility.
Good evening, Chairwoman. Stephen Tomalakian from Wiener Mall Group on behalf of the applicant, HK Truck Services. We're here this evening to resume our public hearing that began last March. May I say?
Please, of course.
The board will recall, HK Truck Services owns the old Craig Leano Dodge. Like, it purchased the property maybe within the past two years, and we've been, even before that time, we've been working on plans to create a new, improved, much better truck sales and service facility to replace the old Dodge dealership. When we were here in March, you heard only from Josh Tyner, our engineer, who's going to be back here to resume his testimony. And he went through primarily, like, pretty much the entire site plan, but what we learned from the board, what we learned from the public feedback, was that there was a driveway on Intervale that was creating issues, that could we maybe get rid of that driveway in Intervale, seal it up, landscape it up, and focus getting the trucks on and off Fanny from Fanny? And we did that. And the guys at Redcom put a lot of work into it. They redesigned pretty much that side of the site to eliminate the connection to Intervale, seal it up, change the parking around, change the access around. One of the things, we submitted a partial set of plans, and the reason we did that is this. Even though we think this plan will, the board will like it, and we think the neighbors will like it, Henry next to me will be going through the outreach he did with the neighborhood. But we didn't want to spend a small pile of money to completely update the plans, because what happens if the board didn't like it or had some big change with it? So we prepared a partial set to give you an idea of where we're going with this. So to the extent that we did originally seek preliminary and final site plan approval from this board, if the board feels like it, you want Mr. Lamontos to see a full set of plans before you issue a final, then maybe there's an opportunity to just ask for preliminary site plan approval if you're satisfied with what you hear tonight, if what you see tonight. Or, you know, it's one of those.
How could we give a final if we don't see the final?
Exactly. But it's one of those things where, rather than just assuming that the board is happy with what it sees. Yeah, that maybe we'll just split it up. Some boards do, you get preliminary, make residential plans, make the plans exactly where the.
Why don't we just wait till you get the final plan?
See?
Why don't we just wait till you get the final plan and get it approved?
We could do it that way, too. I mean, it's one of those things.
I would suggest, in view of everybody's time and effort, I mean, you want a partial approval on a preliminary preliminary plan? Why, why not just wait till, you're going to do the plan anyway, right?
We're going to do it, whether it's.
Why don't you do it and then come back?
Okay, well, we'll leave that for the board. Okay, so what you're going to hear tonight, you're going to hear first from Henry Navy, who's sitting next to me, the HK and HK truck. Uh, Henry unfortunately missed the first meeting, but he's here tonight, one, because it's his property, it's his project, he wants to, he's, he has a new business owner in town, although he's been here a number of years already, to talk about why he's doing this, what he's proposing to do. And most importantly, Henry took the laboring war of reaching out to the neighborhood, showing the plans, getting buy-in while the plan was being redesigned, so Henry's going to talk about that. And then we're going to have Josh Tyner from Redcom, a professional engineer, come back. He's going to show you how he modified the plan, focusing on the Intervale side of the property, how it changed, what he's proposing to do to eliminate access to Intervale, kind of keep that residential side residential.
To limit or eliminate?
Eliminate.
Okay.
What word did I use?
I thought I heard eliminate.
Eliminate, it's it's gone, it's gone.
I believe you, I believe you mentioned that you are going to be eliminating that driveway.
We're eliminating, it's gone.
Yes.
Yeah, on paper, you'll see, it's gone. Then after Josh, you're going to hear from Doug Plinyak from D, Bill and Dean, our traffic engineer. Because we're eliminating that driveway, the traffic report changed, so he created an updated traffic analysis to make sure that what's going on in all Fanny is safe and efficient. And last one, I'll leave John Tykina from John McDonough's associate, he's filling in for John McDonough this evening, will be giving the planning testimony, because there is a D variance associated with this application, in addition to a number of C variances. So without further ado, I'd like to have Mr. Navy's one.
But excuse me, one more. So the preliminary, you're doing away with the one exit total, okay? And so there's the traffic study that you're going to present tonight.
Navy, I think they need, they don't need on the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I thought I was talking. So the plan you're going to present tonight, the traffic study, let's start with that.
Yeah.
That will not change when you get your final plan, is that correct?
No.
Then, okay, I just want to make sure.
No, not changing.
Okay, so the traffic study we're going to hear tonight is going to be on the final plan?
Yes. Assuming, assuming the board likes what it sees when Josh puts it up and says, go with that, because that's why, again, we think that the board is really going to like it, and we're confident that the board will like it, but again, before you spend the resources to fully re-engineer it to make it happen, we wanted to make sure the board liked it and the neighbors liked it. It was a it was a dollars and cents issue, really.
Okay, fine, I, so if the neighbors or if the board doesn't like it, the neighbors don't like it, you're not going to do it, is that?
We're going to come back with something else. We're going to change it, because.
Okay, all right, I'll be quiet.
Yeah, very good. So I'd like to have Mr. Navy's one.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
You can put your hand down. State your names, by your last name, please.
Hi, my name is Henry Knabe. My last name is spelled K-N-A-B-E.
Henry, this is your property, this is your project. Can you introduce yourselves to the board, explain who you are, how long you've been in the facility, and give an overview of what, why you're doing this project before you get into, explain the outreach you're doing with the neighbors.
Sure, so I am.
Make sure the microphone, you're close to the microphone.
The owner of HK Truck Services. We've been at Fanny Road for the last five years and recently purchased the property from Craig Leano. What we are is a truck dealership. This is our second location that we expanded from our original one that my father started about forty years ago out of the back of his van, and we're in South Plainfield, is our original location. And what we do is, we sell service, sell parts for, and we do rental vehicles for commercial trucks, mostly medium duty, like the T two seventy that you saw in the last application. So we work on them, we employ about fifty people between both locations, and the purpose of this project is to expand the facility, update the facility, to accommodate for more mechanics, a more updated facility, to be able to grow our business as well as improve the site location as well. So I, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the first meeting. But after hearing the feedback of what we wanted to have changed, I had reached out to Mr. Zatelli, who's back over here, and we sat down with him and showed him all of the changes to our plans, everything that we wanted to update to accommodate the request of the board, so we sat down and went over that. He seemed to think that it was, would satisfy a lot of the concerns, and we're here to present the changes that we made today.
Mr. Knabe will be here all evening, so if the board has any questions or if the questions come up regarding the operations, he's here to answer any of the board's questions.
Okay, well, he's been, it's been a good business and a good neighbor, so, you know, you've got to accommodate the expansion, but you've got to be in compliance with the audiences, right?
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience on the testimony?
That's not his testimony.
He was just here to really introduce himself and then before we get the professionals up.
Information.
No more, that's it, that's all the interaction, okay?
That's, yeah, if the board has any questions, you want any information, he knows trucks inside and out, he could have, he could have jumped up and helped that guy.
I'm sure we'll hear it from the neighbors later.
How many employees do you plan to have at this site?
This site, we should have around twenty employees, maybe twenty-five, when it's fully, fully staffed and operational.
We're not here, we're not. Twenty, twenty.
Now, that includes everything, that's mechanics, office people, salespeople, everybody?
That's correct. Most of our administration will be done through our South Plainfield headquarters, so we won't have as much office staff there.
Okay.
So it'll be mostly mechanics and the people that communicate between the customer and the mechanic as well as part salespeople.
How many bays are you planning to be open working?
We are planning sixteen bays. Sixteen bays.
The, the, two vehicles or one vehicle?
One vehicle per bay.
The hours that the mechanics would be working, three to five, eighty-six?
They start at seven AM, and right now, we close that facility at five PM.
These are offices.
Five days?
We also work on Saturdays from seven AM to noon right now.
So what time?
To twelve noon.
In terms of the vehicles themselves, the for sale part of the business, do you keep an inventory of new vehicles or used vehicles, or what is the story?
We keep a very minimal stock of new vehicles on site.
What do you mean by minimal?
Five maximum. And they're typically for processing. We currently have about sixty vehicles in stock, but they're all kept in central Pennsylvania at, in Morgantown, Pennsylvania, which is where most of the body equipment gets installed. So we keep the majority of the stock in Morgantown, Pennsylvania, and then we may display, like I said, a small handful of vehicles on site, which would be less than five.
That's new vehicles?
New vehicles, that's right.
In terms of used vehicles, how many would you, rough?
Roughly would also be five, maybe less than five. We don't sell many used vehicles at all. We, we'll take them in on trade sometimes when someone's purchasing a new one, and we'll fix it up, sell it, but it's a very small portion of our business, five or less.
I forgot, how many of the, the truck parking stalls are now shown on the revised plan?
Josh will be up in a few minutes.
Yeah, he's coming up, right?
Well, I'm trying to relate how the business works.
Sixty-five spots.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
So we have ten to fifteen, ten at the low side, fifteen at the high side, new and used trucks that will be there for for sale. They're not being repaired.
Correct.
And that would leave us.
Fifty.
Fifty stalls for trucks that are waiting to be repaired, have been repaired, and are waiting for you to be picked up?
That's correct.
I can't, how many on average do you have that are, we talked about used, we talked about new, and how many are you repairing on a regular basis, around per day, or long term?
I can speak to the other facility that has twelve bays, and we will often have sixty trucks in total between various different purposes, but we'll have around sixty trucks at the other facility in twelve bays. Often at that facility, we have all twelve bays being used at the same, same time, they're typically always full.
So at the end of the day, when you close up, if you're still working on a vehicle, does it just stay in the bay, you shut the bay and it stays inside, or do you pull it back out?
That's correct, it usually stays in the bay.
So this facility is going to be your major area where you're going to do the mechanical repair work for your business, for Plainfield and for here?
This will be, I would say, it's equivalent, but slightly larger. The only difference between the two facilities would be the administrative staff, which would stay in South Plainfield for accounting and things like that.
I call you up, I say, I got a truck, I need some, I need a trade mission or something. I make an appointment?
Typically, yes.
Okay, I bring the truck in, does it go into a bay that day, next day? Depends on how things are going?
So it depends on a lot of situations.
You've got fifty bays out there that are for customers.
Right.
The truck has either been repaired or waiting for repair out there.
Any parking spots?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, not bays of the building.
Right, we've got sixteen.
Bays.
Bays, we've got twenty-five employees.
Where are they parking? My question.
Is this, is this business, the repair part is the main activity on site, correct?
That's correct.
And there'll be some people coming in looking at the truck, but the main, the main business and all the trucks on site are either finished repair or waiting or one or the other.
Oh, waiting on parts sometimes, waiting to get into the.
Yeah.
The bay once, once one is free, that's correct.
You concerned about the, we don't have enough parking, John?
Yeah, can I, can I say something?
Please, Mr. Crowe.
So let me just kind of round this out a little. You said you'll have five new vehicles, maybe five trade-ins, twenty-five employees, that's twenty-five, thirty-five, and twelve, working on twelve vehicles, forty-five.
I believe the amount of parking spots that Josh just mentioned was for truck parking alone, we also have car parking spots as well. But I prefer that he give you the exact numbers on those, because I haven't looked at the.
Because you're not, you're not accounting for the spots that are stacking up to go in to be worked on, and I think that's what they're trying to get at, the stack up. If you have, you're working on one, you may be done in the middle of the day, you have another truck sitting outside waiting to go in to be worked on. So, you know, when you start adding all of these vehicles that you're talking about, you're, you're over fifty spots, right?
Mr. Trebek, is the, is the next witness more in tune with the whole parking situation?
Do we think we need? Car parking is the truck parking?
Do we think we may be better off with him?
I think this gentleman knows the business better than anybody else in this room.
Yeah, just not sure I understand the.
Just try to get a handle on it, that's all.
Sure, I'm just not sure I understand the, the concern yet.
At, at one point, while I was asking the questions, I was wondering whether there's enough car parking spaces, given all the different employees and the assignment of the majority of the site for truck parking. But I, I'll wait till your traffic person gets up and passes it out.
We'll wait till he gets.
I guess the question is, how did you come up with the idea for sixteen bays?
Because that is the volume of business that we aspire to have as far as mechanics and customer basis.[1720.11] We have twelve in South Plainfield and we're busy and jammed there on that, on that site, where if we had sixteen, it would be a better situation for us. And we feel like if the property has the space for it and we can grow into the amount of bays that we'd like to have there, it'd be better to have more. There's also a significant advantage and convenience of the business if there's empty bays. So if we only have eleven mechanics working there at the time, which it takes a very long time to develop a mechanic staff, we have five there right now. But to get to twelve or fifteen is going to be a significant long road. But having two or three empty bays where we can have a truck down that's waiting on parts for three days and not have to push it out and push something else back in, it creates more efficiency and convenience for the business.
If you're working on a truck, is there any average length of time that you have to work on these trucks? Is it going to be a whole day, half a day?
The most common job is in preventative maintenance, which is a two to three hour job, but it could be all the way up to thirty or forty hours for engine rebuilds and swaps.
So you, so if you have a two or three hour maintenance job, you can do two or three trucks in that one day?
That's correct.
So, so you can have two trucks waiting outside to come take their turn inside the, the bay?
Right, that's correct.
You think you have enough parking for all that?
I do.
Is, is the initial intention to alleviate some of the amount of business you have down in South Plainfield? Will you start at the beginning of this, will you take some from there and bring it up here just to make it a little, maybe not as strenuous on the South Plainfield one? Or is this just going to be completely totally different set of business?
It's far enough away where it's not going to have much overlap with customers. We, we do some now, but that's already been done. So some of the ones that traveled further to go to South Plainfield back then are already visiting this location now. So there won't be additional overflow necessarily.
I guess the question I have is, the place in South Plainfield where you have the twelve bays, how much parking do you have?
We have about the same, but we also rent some parking from the neighbors. So we have about sixty, fifty to sixty trucks, parking spots on that site. But I am also going off memory there, I don't have them counted out.
You've got a lot more administrative staff down there too, right?
A lot more administrative staff there, that's right. And that place is about, about thirty people overall.
The last time the board heard some testimony about staggering the construction, doing it in phases, is that still the intent?
It is the intent to keep the existing facility up while we're constructing a new facility. We don't intend to keep it up afterwards. Once we're fully operational in the new facility, we would be demoing the old facility and creating the, and finishing the parking lot. So the, the original suggestion was to keep the old facility up and maybe lease it out to help with the construction costs, which was not, not favorable as what we were told, so we changed that plan.
Have you, have you guys really brainstormed how you're going to build? Well, okay, you just, you're not going to keep the old building in operation while you build a new one, that's gone?
No. We would continue to work out of the old building while the new one is being built. Once we're built and operating in the new building, then we would demolish the old one.
Have you gone through logistics of doing that on that site? With, I mean, ramping up the, the business itself and then having equipment going in and out of the old building? You know you can't put drillers off the street, right?
I, I'm not aware of that, but I don't know that I would need that. We have a lot more space on that entire property than is necessary to run out of the existing facility, so.
If you have an approval, then you will, once you get a CO for the new building, the existing building will then be empty.
That's, that's correct.
End of all.
Correct.
End of all.
That's right.
But you don't anticipate ramping up your mechanic staff until you have the new building, I assume, is that correct?
I would ideally love to have a couple of extra ones, but I only have space for about five mechanics in the existing facility where they're working on top of each other. If I could work up to seven or eight or nine before, while the new building was being constructed, that would be fantastic, but if you, if you know any, please. That would be great.
Could you just go over the existing administrative staff? How many do you have right now in that building?
In perspective?
Yeah.
There, there is essentially no administrative staff in that facility right now. We, who we have there right now is a service manager, two service advisors. The service manager also acts as a parts manager, so he's essentially a location manager. We have two people on part staff. We have a labor assistant essentially, we have a second labor assistant, and right now we have three mechanics.
So you've got about ten people there?
We have about ten people there right now, and, and one part-time, I think makes it eleven.
Again, Mr. Kennedy will be here all evening, so if any issues come up, he'll jump up and answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience? Yes, please.
Questions of this witness?
Questions of this witness only. All right, please come, please come up. My question, excuse me, may we have your name?
My name is Anita Gervasio, I live on Intervale Road.
I'm sorry, can you spell that last name?
G E R V A S I O. I, I don't know whether.
This is your chance to ask questions of this witness based upon the testimony that he just gave.
Okay.
Not to speak in support of or in opposition.
I'm, I'm not in support or opposition, I'm asking, I have just, I have a question.
Sure.
Is, is there a, I see a lot of trucks on, I go up and down Fanny Road all the time because I live right there and I see a lot of used trucks there. So I was wondering if, if that was a large part of the business, how many used trucks would be on that property at, at most times? Is that the kind of question I can ask now?
That's a question, that's sure, perfect.
Sure, so I can, the used sales part of our business is a very insignificant part of our business. It's really only to facilitate the, the sale of a new truck. So we might take a small handful of them in a year and maybe sell ten used trucks in a year. And in the entire year, so you would unlikely see five used trucks for sale on the lot here. It would be more like one to two or three, most on average. Most of the trucks that you see on the lot right now are waiting to be serviced.
Oh.
Or finished being serviced, or, I mean, there's all different kinds of situations that they are there for, but the majority of them are waiting to be serviced or finished being serviced.
Okay, because as I say, I'm on that road constantly. I would say I go out that road probably once or twice a day, every day. And I can say, I mean, I've never thought to count, but I've often seen what looks to me an eyeball estimation of maybe fifteen trucks that are, that are there. I thought they were for sale, I never knew, you know, what, the reason they were on the, you know, why they were there, how long they were there, what they were there for, but that's usually what I see. So are, are those trucks that are there, will they always be close to the road so that everybody who would drive up and down would see however many there are of them there? Or is it possible that maybe if, if you have lots of trucks that are, say, waiting for service, can they be in a, that they have to be right there on that part of the property?
He's going to show on a color map where all the parts is, you'll be able to see. It's going to look completely different.
Significant improvement as far as the visibility and what's in between, having a barrier with landscaping.
Okay. Okay, well that, yeah, that would be good because it does, you know, there, there are lots of trucks that I see all the time and of course, as I say, I had no idea what the, what the point was. I thought they were for sale because they were there all the time. So if, if what you're saying is that by enlarging the property, those trucks would not be just sitting right near the road all the time, I think that would be a far better look for the, you know, the general neighborhood.
Let's see the new plan.
Yes, let's see what the gentleman, okay. Would you like to bring up your next witness?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Tyler, thank you, stay close.
Thank you. Stay close.
Everybody, a gentleman called Josh Tyler, who's a con engineer, he was sworn and qualified after five years.
You understand just along the road?
Yes.
Great.
I'm handing these out.
I don't know. Are what you're handing out, was, was the resubmission plan?
Uh, yeah, these are exhibits that weren't actually submitted.
Okay, then we'll mark it as an exhibit. Can you describe what you're handing out to the board?
Josh, your last name, please?
The, um, original, I'm sorry. The exhibits from last time had, it was colorized exhibit and colorized.
Oh yeah, you had, you had an A1, you had an A1, is that it?
I think you just had an A1.
A1, which was multiple exhibits, so this will be A2.
Thank you. Josh, you get some extracts that you can hand out to the audience?
Yeah.
You spent quite a bit of time since March coming up with a revised plan. Why don't you describe your efforts and how you proposed to revise the, the design to eliminate the Intervale driveway?
All right, so, um, one of the, well, I can do a quick synopsis, I mean, I, I'm not going to go into, although I see a lot of people from the public that weren't here last time, it might help a little bit about the existing conditions, but I'll, I'll just jump more into like what the changes were from last time. The summary of that, and, and it's reflective in the exhibits, the way they're presented here are the two, the two scenarios of the prior submission, the current submission, so you can see that pretty clearly. And then a prior submission of an overlay, perspective aerial, I mean photographic overlay of the, of the two scenarios. And basically the gist of what, what changed was there was the driveway access road into interval, which was removed. We increased, like say, you see the, there's five spaces that are along interval and then there was some spaces that were running parallel. That got reoriented, reoriented and it opened up sort of a corner of a green space in the lot and we moved those five spaces away and we're able to put eight spaces there that are a little further away, they're now like eleven point seven feet away, almost twelve feet.
On the handout, if, if the board member should turn to the second page and that could take.
Sure.
A colorized rendering of, of, not rendering, a colorized version of what the proposed set back move was.
Correct. I think I also want to bring these up on the, the board for the larger public to see. Okay, let me just, for the purpose of anyone who can see, there's a, this was a perspective rendering, that's what the existing condition looks like. Just, that, that's a very helpful, visible representation. The prior proposed condition looked like this, which you can see there's no longer a building down here on the corner, the new building is back here and there was a driveway here, which was the driveway that was in much of the conversation. And the proposed condition now takes that driveway away, pushes those parking spaces back, even these here were, that, that curb line there along Intervale was closer. Now it's further back, so you, you have basically twelve feet here with a whole screen of landscaping being proposed. It reoriented the lot, but we did change around this middle island to put some car parking spaces in the middle. And then one thing you can't see over here on the backside of the fence, well, you'll see it on the other renderings, is that this green space here got a little wider. There were no plantings along this fence, but sort of green it up. And to improve it, from the feedback we received, we've put landscaping along there, so that actually moved off that fence a little bit so that we could fit some more, thicker growth of plantings there. And if we look at this, again, from the site plan perspective, that is on the backside, this is the existing. So you can see that there was gray here and pretty close to the property line were these five parking spaces. This was a consistent one thickness, but there's a residential property here that we moved that away from. And the trash enclosure was located here, which was closer to these. In the proposed, as was requested, we've, that's upside down. We've moved the, the trash enclosure location to this area further away, thickened up this area of landscaping here. Oh, I'm sorry if I'm blocking, yeah. And then again, this is thicker and there's no longer a driveway out onto Intervale. This is reconfigured just because we made it more efficient to, to take advantage of all the things we were trying to do. Lots more landscaping being proposed. And, um, and one other thing in the application documents that were submitted that did change was this building mounted sign that was proposed facing Fanny Road was, we were requesting relief because it was like twenty-five foot eight, we lowered that one to twenty-five feet, which made it compliant. We still do need relief on a couple of the signs just due to the architectural features on the, is that the south side of the building?
So one variance up has been eliminated, is that the only change in terms of variance request?
Uh, let me just, I do have the list of the other one that I think went away. That, that, that one variance was on the one sign, oh, the other change, at one point we were asking for impervious relief because of the in-between phase one and two, but that's irrelevant now, so that's not required anymore. The max impervious, which was compliant at like seventy-seven, let me see. Oh, seventy-seven point one is now seventy-five point six nine percent. So we've added two point something percent of additional green space onto the property.
Still need a variance?
And it, it didn't need a variance.
Oh, it did need a variance.
And then there was a variance requested for the, the four foot high fence, which would be, boy, they're tricking me when they send these things up. This fence here was shown as six feet all the way, but we're dropping it at the front yard setback line so that it's four feet and we don't need relief for that fence in the front yard.
Could you describe the proposed landscaping on Intervale? What are you proposing for that?
Yes. Let me just read it off the plan.
This right here, the landscaping right there.
Those are, um, viburn, leatherly viburnum and inkberry holly.
And how, how tall were they there?
Forty-eight inch height, twenty-four inch height, or, yeah, twenty-four and forty-eight inch are the two rows. But again, we're open to it being arborvitae, something thicker, a denser evergreen that goes to a higher height. This was just what was proposed for consideration by the board and the.
You couldn't see it, but there was some nodding going on from the audience who were talking about.
Like, like that's a good idea? Okay.
I think the point.
I know you couldn't see it.
Both those shrubs lose their, please, uh, if they really would provide much of a.
Right, no, they're not going to be very high.
Is there any issue having a bigger structure, you've got plenty of land to do that, put arborvitae, that might grow to eight, ten feet, twenty feet, eight, eight.
Yeah, is that what would be preferred? I mean, definitely arborvitae are, are good planting or spruce or, you know, like.
You need a variety.
A variety, right, you don't just want it to be a, like some.
You have enough room to kind of stagger.
Yeah, there's eleven feet, we have enough, we staggered two rows at this point. And really at these sizes, maybe we could have fit a little more. So trees of that size, I think, would fit staggered fine and would be able to create a.
And that would even help, that would even help screen the entire building and the whole property.
Right, from anybody on Intervale. And we, we do have enough space to keep the site triangle clear as required, so that's good.
I assume you, your, your client would be willing to work with the town forester on developing appropriate? There's no.
Of course, right.
Josh, you know, while you have the site planned out and since the board members had a number of questions, I think now would be a good time to explain two things. One, where the parking is, how that's working. One, where the parking is, how that's working, and how this revision is going to impact access. We do have our traffic engineer here, but if you can explain just how the site works, because it is changed.
Right. Okay, so, first thing, let me just run through the parking numbers, which are, um, the total required parking is 63, and based on the analysis of a car dealership. And so, since this is a, they're doing trucks, we have a combination, we're addressing it through a combination of truck parking spaces and car parking spaces. We now propose 35 car parking spaces. In the prior submission, we were proposing 27. Now, we're now proposing 65 truck parking spaces. Prior, we were proposing 69.
So it's 100 and...
So it's 102 proposed parking spaces with the two EV, which counts as two from a zoning perspective.
Just the numbers before were adding up, and I think that's what John was getting at.
Yeah.
I think, I think it might be helpful to get a chart of some kind to list, you know, um, new vehicles for sale, used vehicles for sale, vehicles waiting service, employees, and just kind of break that up a little bit, so it's a little easier to, to deal with.
Yeah, that's, yep. I think what we said, what did we, I think I have a little parking use analysis on sheet four that was submitted. Um, we'd identified 15 customer parking, car parking spaces, and 20 employee parking spaces to match to the 35, and then we had said nine customer truck parking spaces, 10 inventory slash sales truck parking spaces, and then service hold truck parking of 46, totaling to that 65.
But see, the issue is you've got, you had 20 employee parking spaces?
That's what we, I mean, I don't think we're necessarily dedicating the spaces to this or that, but that, the numbers to add up to 35 were 20.
Basically, on the floor plan, there's offices that don't show how many people are in there, but assuming one person in each office, and what you showed, there's 22 workstations in the building. Now, I'm not sure if some of those workstations are for the mechanics, or if the mechanics are in addition to those workstations. And that's, we're going to get into the parking discussion.
Right.
And again, that's why some of, a lot of the questions went to the owner, just trying to figure out, you know, what, what's going on in the building.
Right, yeah. I mean, so, I mean, it's a combination maybe of operational testimony to what those workstations were going to be used for, but, um, right now, we have 35 car parking spaces on our site plan. I know that. And, um, and I know that our plan reflected, at least presented, as a reasonable average operational function, that there would be 15 needed for customers and 24 employees. I'm sure they could have 25 employees and be fine with 10 customer car parking spaces because they have, sometimes it's truck, customers come in trucks, sometimes they come in cars, and I can't imagine it would have to be that strictly held at 15 and 20, but it's just a way of reflecting what I think was appropriate to what he represented the need to be.
I think the board just also want to make sure that the number's big enough. If you, if you have in your plans that there's 22 workstations, what do you, how many people are you starting with, right? How many people you go, is it starting with 10, you hope to get to 22? And then you have mechanics, so if you have 22 people working inside in clerical stuff, and then you have a dozen mechanics, now you have to 30-something, you know, then where are the people who are coming to, uh, drop off vehicles parking, who are coming to shop for vehicle? That doesn't really leave a lot of room there. Am I right? Is that what you...
I, I understand your concern, so...
Josh, 35 car parking spaces. So for 10 of them to be dedicated to customer parking, for car parking, is, is in excess of what we need. In South Plainfield, we might have two, three, four car customer parking spaces. It's essentially all employees and trucks coming in and out. So it is, it's, there might be someone coming in to pick up cars at the counter, car leaves right, right away again. Someone might come in because they're meeting with a salesperson to purchase a vehicle for an hour, or a vendor stops by. There's 10 spots is way more than we need, so most of those will be used for...
So you're not getting where you would have 10 civilians...
No.
Coming in at once than you would need spots. You're going to have two or three people coming in, someone's looking at a car, someone's dropping something off, someone's picking up a part, and that's rotating, and it's not where you would have 10 people that are not working for the company coming in at once. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, that, that would not happen at this facility.
And if it did, you'd be very lucky, because you'd be selling a hell of a lot of trucks.
It, it would be a fantastic problem to have, but I can't foresee it based on what would happen in our South Plainfield facility. It's mostly trucks.
We're just trying to get a better understanding, because there's a lot of numbers going on, and sometimes it doesn't look like the best ratio.
True.
But you're explaining, for me, you're explaining it well, so I appreciate it.
Sure.
So, back to, uh, back to this one, which is the now current proposed layout, which would be the second of the R2s. Um, I guess I'll stand on this side. So, now the facility's only going to have two access driveway locations. One is a full movement in and out, which is the first one you'd see as you drove up Fanny Road, making a left, which is directly across from, I think it's STS or tire, something over there. And, and so, vehicles can come in, and they can come out, but, um, if they go down into this lower parking lot, which is construction-wise is considered phase two, just because those guys know, and, and believe me, I, I've talked with people in our construction team, we have thought about the logistics a little bit, um, you know, there will be times where I think they'll feel like it's a little tight, but the means and methods of how they'll accomplish it, they'll be able to do it, and they will keep this building operational while they work on the new building, and then they'll be able to take this down after they have the occupancy over there. Um, so, there, there's a sort of a drive, like a intersection here where they can come in and out, they can loop around, basically, come back out, exit this way, or if you go around the building and you use these parking spaces, that's fine, that still is two-way. But then, as you come around the back of the building, this becomes a one-way circulation that way, that, it also has the angled truck parking spaces, so that as they drove, they could back in, then they could pull out, or people can go into the bays, they can back back out, and it's one-way circulation, back down and around and out, and coming out onto Fanny Road from there, it's only going to be the southbound movement on Fanny Road. They're not going to be able to make a left from this one. So, that's basically how the traffic on the site will be restricted.
Restricted by signage, is that right?
Yeah, there will be signs, there'll be, like, no enter sign here, and, um, right only kind of sign. If that's not on the plan, it will be.
The cars that come into the site on the far left side, they're going to be going in and out the same way, but once the trucks are serviced, all the servicing of the trucks is in the major building, right? Once they're serviced, they come out, they're just going to be going out the one way, right?
Well, I, I suppose if they're serviced on this side of the building, in these eight bays that are on the south side of the building, they could make their way out through this full movement one, but I don't know how they'll operate that, maybe they'll just send everybody out.
They're generally going out the other way.
Yeah, but the, but if you're serviced on this side, they're definitely going to have to come out only and come out.
Is there a right turn only on both exits, or just the one?
Only the one. The other one gives an opportunity to go left. And, um, that's really it. I mean, the, the main areas of where the car parking is, there is car parking here in front of the entrance, and there's the nine spaces here in the little lot in front of the end of the building. There's eight spaces over here, and then this whole middle island now consists of car parking spaces. There's 12, 12 in that part. The perimeter parking is for the truck, service trucks, and maybe, maybe the inventory will be up here, I'm not sure. But, yeah, so we'll definitely be able to thicken that to the satisfaction of the engineer and planner and forestry expert and anybody else that wants to weigh in. Um, yeah, I think, other question?
Are there any other significant changes to your plan compared to when we were here in March, or did you just summarize?
I think I've summarized all of them.
And I think you summarized the changes you made, too. So, uh, the, the concern for the folks living on Intervale, basically, right now, the new plan, they will have no disruption from egress or entrance or, uh, of this property, and it'll be screened, so they won't need too much of the property activity going on. Is that correct?
Right, at the end of the day. Now, when we improve the screening, as a condition of approval, if that's the way we go forward. Um, again, right now, there is cars coming out, and driveways here on the corners and driveways, and...
Nice approval.
So that's, that's what, you know, people living over here are looking at this building, now they have sort of a screen wall.
Okay. Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, that was...
What is the dimension of the truck parking spaces?
Uh, they do vary. The, most of them are, uh, down in the lower area, they're 12 by 35, and then, there's a few up, like, the ones along the side across from the service bays are, some of them are 12 by 40, and, uh, angled ones are a combination of like 12 by 40, 12 by 35. But it's always, we always try to do it 12 foot wide, and then 35 was sort of the minimum, and some opportunities for 40 feet existed, so that's what we proposed.
Now, this might sound obvious, but the trucks that are being serviced, like, we're not talking about the trailers, let me...
Did I say trailers?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're talking about...
Yeah, they, they don't, they don't do trailer parking here, like, or they don't anticipate to either, it's single unit, single unit trucks with a box and a cab together.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they're going to do a, a big, all it brings is the cab, they wouldn't drag the trailer?
Right, if, yeah, if they did a cab, they can do a cab, right.
And your client said that he specialized, or specialized, that majority of their business was a certain-sized vehicle?
I don't recall what, what you said, the majority?
The majority of our business is a, uh, a 26-foot straight truck. Most of them are non-CDL. If you saw the picture of the previous gentleman, it's, the entire truck is 35 feet long by eight feet wide, and the box on the back, like, if you've got a washer and dryer dropped off at your house with a box truck in the back and a lift gate that drops it down, that's the majority of the, the vehicles. There's never a trailer that is left on our property.
So the, the majority is, what did you say, 24 feet up to 35 feet?
The, the term for it is a 26-foot box truck. The, the van body in the back, the box in the back, is 26 feet long.
Oh, okay.
The overall unit, when you include the cab, is 35 feet long.
My objection, objective of this question was to see whether we could increase a little bit of the landscaping along Fanny. But it, the way you described it...
I don't know what we did. Oh, right there.
It's basically, uh, okay, we can look at it again.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Snyder? Again, he's, he's sticking around with the two other witnesses coming up, so if any questions come up...
Do we have any questions from the audience of the testimony given by Mr. Tanner?
Madam Chair, I just have one more question.
Okay.
If anybody else...
Yes. Mr. Tanner.
You just have to identify yourself again.
Again, Anita Gervasio. I, I, it's probably there, but how high is that building?
Oh, gosh.
24-something.
This is really... So it's, the top of the parapet along the front is 34 foot 10 inches. Would have, I believe, be a 35-foot max. Yeah, parap, right, is it, just what you would see would be 30, a little under 35 feet from the grave. Right.
The length of the building, you're getting against the height, right about the length?
Oh, the length. I don't know. The length of the building. Oh, jeez. I could go get a scale, I can measure it.
Doesn't matter, does it?
Hold on a moment.
Doesn't matter. No, no. Doesn't matter.
Nope.
My board feels it doesn't matter, sir.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't have this in my pocket anyway.
Okay, thank you.
I think the only other thing you wanted me to mention was the, uh, the fact that I did review the phase one ESA summary. There was a...
Oh, yes.
Gilmore and Associates wrote a document, we did submit it. Basically, it identified no REC's, which stands for Recognized Environmental Conditions. One, historically recognized environmental condition, which was a, a thousand-gallon tank that had been removed with remedial activities that satisfied DEP. Amendment mentioned, which we know that exhaled soils are required to be tested in accordance with the NJDEP Film Management Protocol.
You're referring to a May 8th, 2025 letter, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um, that, that the board had asked for, just for some information about contamination. We've done an earthwork analysis, which indicates we're around that 1,500 cubic yard mark, um, which I think requires maybe an additional approval of the soil moving permit, or is that...
There's different stages of the soil moving permit, and what you've got to do when you hit certain thresholds, yeah?
Yeah, so, um, our goal will keep it, would be to keep it under the 1,500 cubic yards, but, um, it could be a little more, and then we'd have to go through this other threshold of, uh, an approval if required, and, and again, if there's an unforeseen condition that's encountered, like someone digs and hits something or whatever, they, obviously they would, well, I don't know if it's obvious, but, um, they would remediate it under the oversight of an LSRP, they would contact someone, they would come in, and then they'd notify DEP through the proper channels, and, um, then it'd go through whatever had to be done to contend, to clean up that contamination, if, if that happened.
Yeah, I have a question about that.
Sure.
If you're in the midst of taking the building down, the old building, and the new building's done, and you're taking the old building down, and what's underneath? What's the soil like underneath? What are you going to do? Because I know that it takes the DEP a heck of a long time to de, to clear that soil as clean. You can't do anything with the building or the parking lot for a very long time until the DEP gives approval.
Right.
Any more? Can you explain what an LSRP does these days?
Yeah, so, I mean, it does still take a while, but the, LSRP stands for Licensed Site Remediation Professional, and so the DEP has granted some authority to these individuals that are licensed through the state to, basically, under their own ethical criteria, they understand what the state would be looking for, and they oversee and make sure that cleanups that have to take place follow all the protocols, they submit the documentation to the DEP, and ultimately, it goes through and gets the, sometimes they're called a, like a remedial RIO action, or whatever.
But is your point that while that process is taking place, the business really can't operate?
Well, the business will operate on the other side, but they won't be able to do anything with the property.
Yeah, if, if that happens...
Or do off?
Right.
Okay.
There would be the possibility that, that parking lot down below couldn't get completed as phase two as quickly as they maybe would have wanted, but it may not, it may not be that difficult to, say, for example, like, an LSRP could say, oh, well, okay, we're just going to install some kind of barrier, and it's a capping issue, and we're just capping it, and so, that's what you, you have to install that now instead of just regular pavement, or it's two feet of clean fill to make sure that it's all clean, and then that'll, you'll ultimately be able to get your approval through all the paperwork, but they'll be able to construct it right away.
You're saying the holdup, which is traditionally DEP view, is eliminated with the onsite, uh, license profession?
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's eliminated, it, it's still a process that...
But they get there if people have to...
And, as like land use engineers, we don't, we really don't deal with that all too much directly, like, we, we're, we're smart enough to say, okay, hold on, we're with the LSRP over here right away. Those guys navigate those regulations and make sure that they tell us what to do as a contractor. They, they're, they're the ones that are dictating, you have to do this, oh, that standard isn't met yet, or you have to leave a monitoring well here.
You said you've got a guy outside who can say you've got to do this, you move on.
Yeah, you, right, in that, in that way, right, but it, I'm not saying, it might, it might be that they have to overexcavate some contaminated soil, pay a lot of money to remove it that they weren't aware of, and it's going to take a little longer than it would have, but...
You're right, but, how would you determine whether or not there's something under the slab of the existing building?
Um, you taste it. Um, no, I, I, yeah, if you smell... No, I, I, yeah, if you smell an odor typically that would be, or you see a discoloration or something in the oil, like, if there's an oil or an odor or something, then you...
You've been there a long...
Then you notify someone.
How long has the building been there?
That I don't know, it was, I thought it was the 40s.
It's longer than that because I've lived in this area all my life, so, I know.
Once that asphalt's pulled up and the slab is removed and you see what pit or its boxes there, an LSRP will come out and perhaps say, move them, take it all out, bring it into, move it all. It'll be in that...
Would the applicant be objectionable to a condition if the board chooses to approve this, that an LSRP be retained and present while they're going through the excavation process? So it's not a matter of hoping that the guy on the excavator says, I wanna stop work today, so I'm gonna say I smell something.
Right.
Or I don't wanna stop work, so I'm gonna ignore that. Just to have somebody retained onsite during the excavation process.
Good point. That's good.
Even if he was against it, I think, I think they, they're gonna...
Well, how long would it take to remove this stuff?
Two months at the most, like, not even.
To have an LSRP oversee to make sure that...
Yeah, they'd be, if, if, if there was such a condition on, required, then that there would be probably a two-month engagement of someone.
If, if that's what the city, the township feels is required, I mean, we're bound to comply with the law anyway, so...
Well, I actually, they bring up a great point. It's not an honesty system. I know if I'm on the machine and I wasn't paid to get it done, I might, you know, turn around.
That's right.
You're probably coming back, do you wanna think about that and have, come back with the proposal on that?
Why don't you also think of phasing the occupancy of the new building, so you won't have as much activity, given the fact that you're not gonna have the whole parking lot there.
Might not.
So you just gotta grow into it while you're cleaning it up.
I mean, I don't wanna speak for him, but I think he already thought he was phasing it. You're, you're growing into the business, right? You're not...
Which is what he said is...
What he said at the beginning.
Yeah, he's basically taking the South Flane Field, some of that business, though he's not taking it away, but he's moving people around.
Right, I mean, I'm, I wouldn't...
Why don't you think about it?
Yeah, okay. You have to think about that, but...
He's thinking about it, too.
It's just, it's hard, it seems arbitrary to know how to identify what that phasing would be. Would it be null and void if there was no encountered contamination?
Yeah. Absolutely.
If it was, if it was all stipulated that way, that sort of could make sense, I mean...
Is that a comment then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially in cities, I mean, where you're docking the building down, trying to put a building up, and of course, have a grace, because all the trails lined up in the street.
That's right.
Fortunately, where the built, the existing building is now, your new building is separate apart from it.
Right.
So it's not like you're building a new building on top of the old building.
Right.
It's gonna be a parking lot. It shouldn't be that complicated.
We just have to get, you know, as far as the approvals go, because when, when, on being ass to say, by the construction official, to go out and make sure the site work's done so they can issue the CO, I'm gonna say, well, the new building's done, but the old building's still there. So, in order to get the CO, you're not done, so there's some phasing involved with that. There may be a performance bond for a TCO type thing and we're gonna, if, if the board is looking to, favorably, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna handle logistics of that, so we're not, you know...
Wouldn't it be a TCO?
Right, but there would be, there would have to be a bond. So you'd have to bond the demolition cost, bond the parking lot cost, and bond all of that to get your TCO for the building. So, and, and that's certainly possible, but it's an expense and I wanna make, you know, make sure we do it all, that it works, that the town's covered, that we have a guarantee that this is gonna happen and yet, you know, it's reasonable for the applicant. And that's just paperwork we're gonna have to, that we're gonna have to think about.
Is that agreeable to you?
Yes, sir. You know, and if it's, if it's really that complicated, I know for something just developers' agreements for a complicated project, that spells it all out. Phasing, bonds, guarantees, sureties, it's all laid out.
It's done, it's just that, that's not, that's not your run-of-the-mill approval, it needs a little more thought, that's all.
Got it.
So, I guess that's all for Mr. Tyner.
All right, are there any questions from the audience on Mr. Tanner's testimony only?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I call my next gentleman?
Please.
Okay. Good job.
Yeah, excuse me, may we have five minutes of break, please?
Oh, will you?
Thank you.
You just said...
I wasn't the only one.
Good job, Olivera. I'm the oldest guy here, I'm the, you know...
Yeah.
I'll be the show-off.
I gotta go change my diaper.
Twice. She's, she's 31 now, but back then, they were one of the two guys. Two out of the four years she was there, they were...
And action.
Order, please.
I thank you. You know what, before we swear into Mr. Polniak, I did speak with Mr. Knabey during the break and we heard Mr. Lomendo's suggestion and he will stipulate that during excavation of that phase, that we will have an LSRP retained to be responsible for kind of oversight, making sure that there's no issues with what's discovered underneath, and that's fine.
Brilliant, and when we get to that point, we'll work out some wording, because, you know, does the guy have to be there every minute they're digging?
No.
Not necessarily, you know, and we can work out some kind of protocol.
But the LSRP, I mean, if he's responsible, he's responsible.
Right.
So, you know, he can't be asleeping, but whenever there's significant work, take a look, make sure, keep a tabs on things, and he's responsible, so we'll, we'll work something out.
Did the audience hear what was just said?
Yep.
They will have an LSRP official at the site when needed. Okay? Please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to ask one more.
Can you raise your right hand, please, to swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
Douglas Polniak, P as in Peter, O-L-Y-N-I-A-K.
Can you give the board the benefit of your experience and qualifications so they can qualify as an expert in traffic engineering?
Sure, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Lehigh University in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. I graduated in 1998 and since that time, I've been working in the field of traffic engineering. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer for about the last 21 years. I've testified before over 110 or 120 municipal boards within the state of New Jersey as a traffic engineering expert. And I've been involved, I'm a project engineer with Dublining Consulting Engineers located in Somerville, New Jersey.
Is your license earned with this thing?
It is.
Is it qualified?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Doug, you did the original traffic impact study for the original design and when Josh changed the design and eliminated the Intervale driveway, you did a new or revised traffic impact statement, correct?
That is correct.
Can you give the board an overview of your findings of how the site will operate with only two driveways on Fannie?
Yeah, absolutely. Throughout this process, we've performed a traffic impact analysis, which has been revised a couple of times based on comments made by the professionals as well as the changes in the design. And overall, from, from a traffic impact perspective, the addition of the bays at this site is a pretty light traffic case with respect to the traffic volumes that are generated by the site currently. So to review the potential impacts, we prepared our traffic impact analysis. The last revision was May 9th of this year and it includes those revisions to the driveways along Intervale Road. And to prepare our analysis, what we do is we do peak period traffic volume counts. We typically look during the morning and evening rush hour, because that's when traffic along the roadways are at its busiest and the site will be as busy as well. And we did, originally did these counts, it was back in December of 2023 is when we were engaged to prepare this traffic report. It was on a Tuesday and we count from 7:00 to 9:00 AM in the morning and 4:00 to 6:30 in the evening. And then we isolate the peak hour, the morning and evening peak hour, and find out what is the actual busiest hour of the day during those timeframes. We found that the morning peak hour occurred from 7:45 to 8:45 in the morning and the evening was 4:30 to 5:30. We take those peak hour volumes and what we do is, we call it, you may have heard of it, for a level of service analysis. And that basically analyzes how vehicles turn and proceed through a signalized or unsignalized intersection and we rate them with a level of service, which is similar to a report card. A is exceptional levels of service with almost minimal delay. F means that movements are operating beyond capacity that they can handle. So when we looked at the intersections, adjacent to the intersections, specifically Fannie Road and Intervale, we found that movements at that location during the morning and evening peak hours were operating at a level of service C, which is an acceptable level of service. What we then did is we projected additional trip generation associated during those peak hours with the site expansion and we, you know, based on discussions with the applicant, the bays are what drives the traffic, because that's, you know, how he generates most of his business. So what we did is we took the volumes that we counted and, to give the board an example of the low volumes associated with the site during the peak hours, what we found during the morning peak hours, that there were seven entering vehicles and six, six exiting vehicles. And in the evening peak hour, those volumes were seven entering and 12 exiting. So we took those volumes and we conservatively increased them, we tripled them, because the bays are almost tripling, and found that the future volume associated with the site, based on current operations and the expansion, would be about, let's say, 20 vehicles entering in the morning and 20 exiting, and then the evening a little busier, because you have staff, I guess, leaving, 21 entering and then about 35 exiting. So, at a maximum, you're looking at one vehicle entering or exiting those two driveways that are gonna be along Fannie Road about one minute during the peak hours, which, each, each minute, which is an extremely high traffic volume. What's important to note is that both the Institute of Transportation Engineers and NJDOT consider 100 peak hour trips as a significant volume that would require analysis, because that could be a volume that would have impacts at off-site locations. The site's gonna do about 60% of that, about 60, 60 trips an hour, just demonstrating that it doesn't reach that level that would be required by those entities. We also did a little bit of a zoning analysis. The site's located in the OS zone, which also permits offices, medical offices and retail. Some of those permitted uses, if they were to be developed on this property, would generate substantially more traffic than the, than the traffic that we're projecting with this site. And in some instances, it could be somewhere between 20 to 65 more peak hour trips. So, this site is in line with other permitted uses and in some instances, actually would generate less than some of those. So overall, even though the site's generating volumes that aren't even necessarily significant by IT and NJDOT, we did do a future analysis with and without that site traffic at the site driveways and at the adjacent intersection. And to do so, we inflated the existing volumes to create a future no-build condition, which it takes into account background growth that's been established by NJDOT from Morris County. And we inflated that over a five-year build period, build period, excuse me, just based on consultation with the applicant, that he thinks he possibly could be fully up and running in five years. So we expanded those volumes and did a comparative analysis with and without the site traffic added to the new Fannie Road driveways. And we found that the, the impact at the signalized intersection will be minimal, there will not be any change in those levels of service with or without the site traffic during the future conditions. So, movements will, they'll degrade to a level of service D based on that background growth, but they won't drop due to the addition of traffic associated with this development. We also analyzed the driveways on Fannie Road. As you heard, the northerly driveway will be right turn egress only, the southerly driveway will allow full movements. In my opinion, the design of the site is a vast improvement over what's existing out there with respect to access and circulation. Currently, the Intervale Road frontage is, is a number of driveways, some even encroaching close to the signalized intersection, which is a great, great design, as you can imagine. And Fannie Road has a number of curb cuts, which will be reduced and delineated those two new driveways. So, you know, based on my site plan review, the access is far superior to what is existing out there now. As you heard Mr. Tyner testify to, there's gonna be 30-foot drive aisles within the truck and passenger parking fields. And then, at the southerly portion of the new building, you'll have a 40-foot two-way drive aisle with a one-way circulation around the site, which has larger-than-normal drive aisles for heavy vehicles, such as the trucks proposed, so sufficient circulation will be allowed on site. There was a lot of discussion with respect to the parking supply. 35 physical passenger vehicle spaces are proposed. There is a two-vehicle, a two-parking space credit due to the EV spaces proposed, but, you know, those aren't physical spaces to address the board's comments with respect to the number of staff. 65 truck parking spaces are proposed. So overall, as you heard, a total of 100 physical parking spaces. You know, based on discussions that we had with the applicant as well as the testimony provided, it sure sounds like that would be sufficient parking, you know, based on our review, just because you heard there's 35 passenger spaces, maybe 20 employees, and you don't really have a lot of customers on site, a handful coming to either buy a part or, you know, look at a vehicle, so...
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
I have a total of 102 parking spaces. You mentioned 100.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. It's 100 physical parking spaces, like constructed parking spaces. The applicant's given like a credit for two spaces because of those EV credits. For every electric vehicle space you get, they're count, they're kind of like double counted, so it's 102 parking spaces per, for the ordinance, for the requirement, but onsite, there will be 100 parking spaces constructed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just, you know, in summary, you know, based on my review, access with the one right turn egress only driveway, one full movement driveway, they'll operate at level of service C. The volumes will not be of any substantial level that will change levels of service at any off-site intersections. And the site has been designed to accommodate the larger vehicles that are proposed and it gives an opportunity to develop a, a site that is currently, has a substantial number of ill-defined driveways along its frontage and has the potential to generate even less traffic than some permitted uses within the zone.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Questions of the board? Sir?
Just a question, I'm looking at Figure 2, which is the morning, and in parentheses, evening peak hour, 2028 no-build level of service. Which is the 26th sheet of your 77 sheet, if that helps you all.
Oh, did you mean Figure 11?
Figure 11, sorry, yes, Figure 11. Now, that shows the multiple driveways that are out there now.
Yes.
And it says that in the no-build condition, the northernmost driveway in the evening is operating at D.
Correct.
The next sheet, Figure 12, is a bigger site, fewer driveways, but that movement improves to a B. How does that happen when you've got more traffic coming out of the driveway?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. The reason that occurs is that because the turning movements at that location are gonna be limited to just right turn egress, so there's less conflicts, so it makes for that movement to be easier, so it reduces the delay. If you have left turn vehicles onto Fannie Road, it makes for a more challenging turn and you also have left turns entering at that location to conflict with it. So, there's just a lot less conflicts and a lot less traffic for those exiting movements to compete with.
Okay, good, thank you.
You have a question?
How wide are the aisles? There's a real sliver of landscaping along Fannie Road, right in the middle of the parking lot.
Proposed, right?
Yeah. Is there any way that we can tighten up to get a little more space in that location? Because that's the area that would be exposed to the parking lot and the house.
You mean, like, vehicles passing the site?
I, you know, I, I asked your client what he needed for the parking spaces and he said the trucks that he serves basically in 35 feet. How wide is the aisle they need to get in and out of those spaces?
Yeah, I think proposed along those spaces is a 30-foot aisle.
I didn't find any dimensions on any of them.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that what it is, 30 feet?
It's a 30-foot aisle.
Which is probably necessary for those trucks to get in and out of those spaces.
Yeah, you would like a little bit extra width there for a larger space.
How wide are those spaces?
Those are 12 feet wide spaces.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
Passenger vehicle, passenger vehicle or nine?
Nine, 18, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I guess it's a function of whether or not, you know, the applicant would be comfortable, reducing the length of those spaces.
As those eight spaces along Intervale... Are those eight spaces along Intervale shorter than that 35-foot depth?
No.
Looks to be.
Those eight are 35.
All in that area are all 35 feet?
Yeah, with a 30-foot aisle behind it as well. So it kind of matches those ones that are on Fannie as well.
The smallest vehicle he uses is 35, it services 35 feet.
I believe that was, is 35 generally your small? Do you have much larger than that?
35 is the largest, it's the most common.
Okay. 35 is the largest and most common.
What is?
Is there a?
Maybe, I don't want to do any waste all night on this, but I think you've got to get a couple more feet of area in there to get some landscaping to move really.
That could be something that we'd be working with Mr. Lemanowitz to see whether we could do perhaps on those few spaces, and I hate to use the word a compact truck space, maybe we're smaller trucks.
Might these guys do it.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's.
They'll figure it out.
So the traffic study indicates that there's not going to be any major impact to the intersections there, the traffic, or whatever, of the renovations of the site, right?
Yes, based on, yep.
Based on your side, thank you. Good question.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience on the testimony that has been given by this gentleman?
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
But just, I have one silly question again. Preliminary at the Woodlurk United, you're going to come back with another one, but that won't affect this traffic study at all. Is that correct?
No.
So we're done with traffic study?
We're done with traffic. I think the only open issue is the construction phasing. And that, I mean, I'm sure the board is interested in that, but that's something that typically, I mean, you work out with the board engineer, you work out the fate to make sure that everything can be parked, the trailers, wherever. That's kind of a technical, construction means and methods.
Well, it's going to depend on what happens under the old building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I think Mr. Lemanowitz would prefer to see a full set of plans before preliminary or final.
Whatever the board's comfortable doing, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Last but not least, I'd like to call John Tykina, our professional planner, who's filling in for Mr. Lemanowitz this evening.
Those are big shoes to fill.
Did you testify here before?
I have.
All right, good.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you state your names, by your last name, please?
My name's John Tykina, T as in Thomas, A I K as in Kelly, I N as in Nancy A. Licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, have been since I completed my studies at Rutgers University. I'm the principal of all things planning and development in Kendall Park, New Jersey, where all the good planners have their offices. I've been a planner for 32 years and testified before more than 175 boards around the state, including this one that's here in 2022, for 50 lack of one possible.
And your license is, uh, maybe it's?
It is.
And you should, just to take your.
Don't please call upon.
Thank you.
John, so do you have any review? Can you go through your planning analysis and then emphasize, explain the basis for the D variance we're seeking, as well as go over the variants, the bulks that are still applicable?
Certainly. So the prior experts did a really nice job. It's always nice working with Redcom and Dolan and Dean, they get all the facts straight up in front, so I'm not going to repeat anything that was previously stated. We do have a site in the office service zone, which does not permit truck sales or truck repair, but we do have an existing truck sales or auto sales and repair facility, so that we are proposing to expand. So this would be an expansion of a non-conforming use. This is what is considered to be a D2 variance under the statutory criteria. And as such, the statutes recognize, and the court cases recognize, that any zoning would have been done recognizing that this prior non-conforming use existed. So if you're doing anything to it, you don't have to justify that the new, that the use could be there. Really, the standard is, is the expansion, what's being accomplished as part of the expansion, is it making the use of the site better than it was under its prior conditions? And that was set forth in the case Cole versus Fairlawn, which, again, the court cases kind of provide a little bit of a roadmap as to what provides an adequate findings for the board in terms of its approval. So in this instance, we believe we're improving the site significantly. We're going to have a new building, it's going to be all nice and pretty, it's not going to be all the way up at the corner. In some communities, being all the way up at the corner is a nice thing if you're on downtown Main Street, but I don't think Fannie Road is exactly downtown Main Street here in Precipiny. And we think having a new modern building, setback a little bit from the road, having all modern parking with adequate turning rate of eye and an adequate parking arrangement, and most importantly, with a high-quality landscape buffer along Intervale Road and Fannie Road into our residential neighbors, absolutely is going to represent a much better planning alternative than our current conditions, even though it's me expanded. We also would need to continue to support some of the purposes of zoning. So again, I think the first one we would be supporting is Purpose I, promote a desirable visual environment through good civic design and arrangement. I think Redcom and the landscape architects have done a very nice job of designing a site here that is very attractive. I think we've done a nice job of mitigating any potential traffic impacts. And again, the most important thing that was done here was the applicant and the experts listen to the board, listen to the public. You know, when I mention these court cases, et cetera, that provide the roadmap, every one of them says the same thing, which is that the local community and the local board is to be deferred to because you know best. So I think that the applicant's done a very nice job here of listening to the board and listening to your concerns to make sure that they are addressed. And then secondly, I think we're promoting Purpose M, to coordinate the various procedures affecting land development with the views towards lessening the cost of that development and to the more efficient use of the land. So in this instance, we have many varied environmental requirements, traffic requirements, DOT, DEP, et cetera, that have to be met in addition to the county and township. And in this instance, all of those have to be coordinated, and I think the applicant's done a very nice job of doing that, especially how we've handled the traffic, to be able to take the traffic off a local road, get it all to 202, limit the number of driveways, limit the number of turning movements at the driveways. I think that's, that's really a nice, really nice improvement for the site. And again, that resulted from listening, listening to the board. In terms of our, the rest of our variance relief, we do have a number of bulk variances that remain. They relate to, I guess, we still have a solid fence in the front yard, though it's down, everything's down to four feet high. We think still having that fence there is a, is a nice protection for our neighbors to make sure that at that four-feet height, we don't get any headlights that are escaping the site. That's the most important thing. On any site that you have, your two impacts that address your neighbors the most are light and noise. So if we can make sure that all of our headlights stay on the site with a nice four-foot fence, some taller arbivides, as the board had suggested, as the neighbor has suggested along the Intervale, and we'll find a couple extra feet along Fannie Road, adjacent to those parking spaces, to make sure that we get an adequate buffer in that area as well. We think that that is, that is absolutely a better planning alternative. The impervious coverage variance has been eliminated. The 20-foot buffer that is required, we are less than that, we're as low as five feet in some areas. But again, we think our combination of fencing and landscaping, along with where the different parking spaces and buffers are, we think that we've done a nice job of mitigating that to a large degree. We've thickened up the buffer kind of where we need to based on our adjacent uses, and we've been able to reduce it and use that space more efficiently for parking and circulation, depending on, depending on what's immediately adjacent to us. We talked about parking, and again, we believe that the 100 parking space, 102 parking spaces proposed are more than adequate, and they are compliant with the ordinance with 63 being required. And then we do require a number of wall signs. We have, we eliminated a variance for the height of the wall sign on the front building, on the front side along Fannie, but we do still have signs facing, facing our side, facing to the two sides, so we kind of show up and down Route 202. And we do have an additional sign that faces the Intervale and Fannie intersection, recognizing that that is kind of our primary access for some trucks and people coming in off of 287. So we think that all of those signs are appropriate. We think that they're in keeping, in terms of the size and scale of being on a 24,000 square foot building, they're certainly not overpowering in any way, shape, or form. We'll make sure that we don't have any glare from all, from any of the lighting that would, that would be.
Could you just hold up on that? I'm sorry to interrupt. Where is it in our paperwork? Does anybody see where the signs are detailed? Do we have that?
No.
Okay.
Anything in the new proposal?
In any proposal?
The one picture shown.
They're on the, they're on the, the architectural exhibit.
Okay. So that's the only thing we have? So is, can we just talk about that now? Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, so the signs are, any of them lit? Will they be lit up after hours? Will the neighbors see them? That might be a concern for some of the neighbors, but how do we address that issue?
We typically, just any lit signs, they show up when the business shuts off, and we'll agree that will be there on timers that they'll shut off.
Okay.
They're not going to be on all day. So whenever the board feels comfortable, I mean, the business closes at five or six o'clock.
All right, so is the owner willing to say that at six o'clock, when the, when the lights are out, that light is out also? Okay.
Yes. At least it does that.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Sure. Well, you were talking about the lights out and those signs. In the last meeting, we agreed we were shutting a lot of the lights off in our business houses, but for security, right?
Correct.
And the parking lot there is, yeah.
That's only parking lots. Signs will go out, period.
Great.
So what sign variances do you need? Just number of signs?
No, we need sign height, because we have two signs that are four and a half feet high, and we have two signs that are 4.25 and 4.1 feet high. And then we have sign mounting height. We were able to eliminate the variance on Fannie Road.
Are you referring to something that was submitted to the board?
I'm referring to Mr. Lemanowitz's letter. It's actually what I'm reading them out of.
Okay.
They are on the, they're on the submission as well, but Planning Board Engineer did a really nice job of making a nice table, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Intervale Road sign is 28 feet one inch, Intervale Road Hino sign, the Cummins sign is 28 feet one inch, the Intervale Road Hino sign is 28 feet two inches above, and they're above grade, the Fannie Road was lowered to the 25 feet. And again, when you look at the, at the architecture, there's kind of spots within the facade where the signs fit best, and that's why we think they're the most appropriate, being at 28 feet. Again, on a 35-foot tall building, it's, a four-foot high sign is not, is not excessive in any way, shape, or form.
Sure. What's the date of Mr. Lemanowitz's report you're referring to?
I'm referring to February 25th, 2025.
Okay, got it.
That's the only one I have.
And can I request that, unless I'm mistaken, do we have a sheet now that lists all the variances that are going to be requested for in a synopsis form?
Well, there was one submitted with the application, but Mr. Lemanowitz has the most up to date, and there's, a few of them have been eliminated. So if you have Mr. Lemanowitz's review report?
Okay.
Yes, it's line by line.
Okay.
Do we have that? I suspect that you're going to do a final.
Right.
Set of engineering drawings.
And then that'll be?
And that'll be, it'll be on your cover sheet for the.
Just for the board's information, the last submission only had a couple of plans, plan sheets, and I don't disassemble and reassemble applicants' documents.
Okay.
So I didn't produce a report, but I've not seen a set of plans, a full set of plans with the changes seen tonight.
Can you have that first?
Yes, because now we see that, I don't want to be presumptuous, if the board likes this plan, but they ever seem to appreciate the plan, so now we can spend the money and do the plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, it would just be a shame if we wasted all that money.
Yeah, it'd be easier for us, I think, also to be able to.
Quick question. The ID sign on the corner, that's compliant?
Yes. Yes.
I think there was testimony that that sign was lowered. Is that, is that the sign you're talking about?
That'll show up, the revised plans, if somebody's going to put this zoning table as, to reflect the latest version of this plan.
Yes.
Which would be the final.
Including the signs, the parking, and all that stuff.
Yes, it's correct.
And we're going to have a line on here someplace that says Phase 1, Phase 2.
Yes.
And you're going to consider, Bill, do you think that the conditions for Phase 1, Phase 2 are a developer's agreement or a resolution?
I think we could probably do another resolution. I think we can work on that. I think we can work on that. Okay.
Whatever the board's most comfortable doing. I mean, if we spell out conditions or have the contract.
Resolutions become conditions, conditions become resolutions.
Right. Little one's saying is that it depends how complicated it becomes, but either way, it's fine. It's all the same.
And then, as you know, with all of your, all of your variance relief, everything has to be wrapped up in the negative criteria, not have a substantial detriment to all the good, and not have a substantial impairment to the zone plan and the master plan. In this instance, I think the applicant has done a very nice job of limiting and mitigating any potential detriment to our surrounding neighbors. I think we've done a nice job of providing additional landscaping, reducing the driveways, lowering the lights, doing all those things that truly have impacts on our neighbors. I think we've done a nice job of making sure we don't have any substantial detriment to them. Then in terms of the zone plan and the master plan, the new project is complying with, in terms of the building, with all the bulk requirements of the zone, in terms of setbacks and lock coverage and building coverage and building height, so the massing is not going to constitute overdevelopment. We already have uses on the site. Again, we are improving those existing conditions, pulling back those non-conformities along Fannie and Intervale, and improving those conditions. We are on the edge of the OS zone. SED across the street actually permits this use as well as many, many more intensive uses. So again, I think on the, on the edge of the zone, we're certainly not going to have any impairment to the integrity of the OS zone. So for those reasons, I believe the board has the ability to grant the relief request. I'm available for your questions.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience on the testimony given by Mr. Tykina? Nora, may we have a?
Hold on a second. Are those all your witnesses tonight?
That is it. That is it.
Nora, could you please give us a?
And I wouldn't.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
We're just coming back with the engineer with a final, with a proposed, a final proposal, right?
Right, that's it.
So you probably don't need a ton of time, is what I would ask.
And look, I asked Josh, best circumstances, how quickly did Redcom can work out a complete set of effectively compliant plans?
I mean, I don't think we would get them back in time for like an estimate hearing.
But so Nora's going to try to give us a realistically expedited date.
We meet twice a month.
So give her, give her what, how much time you think you need, and then she'll work based on.
Actually, what I, I'd like to know, how much will you come back? How much time will you need? That's more important.
About 20, 20 minutes?
Not including the time for.
Well, is public going tonight, or public going to come later?
Pretty late, I don't know.
I think just for Josh to kind of go through, work out the zoning table, the phase in plan, can't be more than a half hour.
Okay, okay. And from the public standpoint, can I just, we got, I mean, all the public concerns that were addressed initially, I think are still here, are here tonight, for the most part. Okay, we might have some new ones, but, so, everything that we asked for, that I see here right now on the initial hearing, has been majorly improved, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and so you want to make sure we would like the site. This is preliminary. Now, when you say you're going to do the final, how much different is the final going to be? That's my point.
But now that we're coming back with the full-blown, completed, drafted, beautiful Uh, Mr. Leman, but now that we're coming back with the full-blown, completed, drafted, beautiful plan, whereas we'll go for preliminary and file. I mean, I was suggesting preliminary.
That's what I, okay, one, one set of plans.
Get it all done.
Got it, okay.
And it, I know it's kind of late, but it would be nice to hear from them, so if there's any further tweaks, Josh could work it in.
And so we hit, so we saw some head shaking earlier, all right, when we were testifying that there's been an improvement. So I would like to have the time to ask the residents here if you got some other major issues here.
Thank you.
Well, why don't we ask the question this way?
Okay.
Is there anyone present in the audience who has some concerns or objections to what's been presented tonight that you would really like the applicant to hear?
No. That's a good sign for you, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Lady with the blue sweater.
Behind you. No, we're talking about the lady behind you.
I don't really think this is going to be helpful. I, since I live seeing people, I'm, I have difficulty here, and so I'm at a loss right now. My biggest concern, I'm very happy to hear.
We all know who you are, but could you just identify yourself for the record?
Well, my name is Harry of Jacobs. I'm a two-leg drive. Um, I'm very happy that the applicant has closed off the, uh, curb cut on Intervale Road. Uh, that's a good sign as being a good neighbor. I like that. Uh, I am concerned about signage. I don't know, uh, from what I gather, you're proposing four signs. Is that right? Did I hear correctly?
Sure.
I don't know why you need four signs. I, I'd like an explanation.
The reason is because we're a dealer for Cummins, the engine maker, for Hino, the truck maker. As part of the dealership obligation, you have to have a sign.
Each one of your, uh?
For each one, like if you represent Ford or Chrysler, or Ford wants their sign, Chrysler wants their sign. It's the same. There are different manufacturers that want their presence.
You also want the customer to know what you're selling?
I have to assume I heard, no, nothing at all in, in the record. There will not be any freestanding signs.
There's one freestanding.
There's one.
But the freestanding sign is compliant.
It's a monument.
What? It's a monument.
It's on Fannie, it's under this tree.
And what's a monument song going to say?
What's, what's the sign going to say?
I don't think it matters what it's going to say.
If you're going to have your associates' names on the four signs, what is the monument sign for? For what?
HK truck, which is the dealership.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and it's in compliance anyway.
Okay, um, I won't belabor the point. I, I just feel that he's been here a long time. People know him. His customers know where he's located. I just felt that four signs was a bit harsh.
Lady in the blue shirt, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm just.
Make sure you identify yourself.
We just need your name, please. Joyce O'Neill, 31 Oakland. Um, I'm just concerned about the traffic study on Fannie Road because, uh, they did the study on a Tuesday, which Tuesday, traffic goes down on Tuesday. Go on a Monday. Monday morning, that is, you know, a big thing. But there's a lot of traffic there, plus coming down the hill in the, in the winter especially. There, I don't know how far, I don't know the, the distance between the driveways and the hill, you know? I mean, you're coming down a hill. In the winter, I know that area sometimes can get a little bit slip, and there's like a little curve right before there, and, you know, there's, I know a couple of people have had accidents there. So, um, I'm just concerned about that. Plus, I don't know the, about the making left-hand turns going 202 north. The left-hand turn into that lock, into the, the place. I mean, it's a, I believe it's a double yellow line, so that technically you shouldn't be making that, you know, you know? But, you know, that's going to stop a 202, and again, I don't know how far it is from the intersection. That gets messed up anyway, because people are coming off 287 and going up 202. Plus, if anything happens on 287, that it gets all messed up there, you know? Because people are turning up and down.
Thank you.
So I'm just concerned about the traffic on Fannie Road in that area. Thank you. Thank you very much.
There's a gentleman back there.
There's a gentleman back there.
First name Vamsi, V A M S I, last name Kollie, K O L L I, 35-leg drive. I completely agree with this lady. That intersection is a bad intersection. The traffic which is coming from mountain legs through Fannie Road, that is a very heavy traffic, especially during the peak season. I, I don't know the traffic survey. I don't completely agree with that, but I have my doubts, and I completely agree with this young lady.
Thank you very much.
And recently, there was one traffic incident where from 202, turning into, I think that is, turning towards the Bundan, they hit two traffic poles quite recently. Two traffic poles was completely down.
Improving traffic flow in the entire community, trust me, with everything going on, uh, around the community, is, is an issue, but the point being that we're dealing with here is this site and the change in the business there, according to the traffic engineer's study and professional, is not going to have any increase or major impact on the intersection traffic, number of cars. And so we need to base our decisions on those studies, okay? And, uh.
You're not going from zero to this.
Right, yeah.
You're about the same.
Yeah, we, we share your concern on that intersection. That intersection's in bad shape a lot of times in the conditions of winter. But this business change is not going to, in our opinion, and the professionals' opinion at this time, if we approve that application, that would not be a mitigating factor, okay? Right at this point. So your concern's valid, but it's not applicable to decision of negativity on this decision, in our, in my opinion, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Nora, may we have a date, please?
Uh, no more than half an hour, correct?
No more than half hour.
Sure.
And the public just spoke, so.
August 7th.
August 6th?
August 6th.
August 6th. And we're going to try to get the plans as soon as possible to Mr. Lemanowitz, so he can, we'll get them to you first of all.
Get them to her first.
Yeah, it's just going to be Mr. Tyler. You're done.
And, and just to verify, that's. That'll be the engineer's plans and the architect's plans.
Are the architect's plans changed?
Well, there's signs on the architect's plans.
It's the same company, so yeah, they'll do it.
Right.
Great.
That sounds great.
All extensions.
August 6th.
We'll give all week's.
6th, 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 August 6th.
Thank you so much, everybody. Enjoy the ceremony, see you home.
Adjourn.
Adjourn, someone.
Second.
Motion.
Second. All right.
How are you?
How are you?
Bumble part along.
Yeah.
You still have your secretary?
She's there, went so long.
You're looking good.